Welcome to the Monday, October 6, 2014, meeting of the Cape Elizabeth Town Council. May we please have the roll call?
Chairman Sullivan?
Here.
Counselor Jordan?
Here.
Counselor McCoslin?
Here.
Counselor Ray?
Here.
Counselor Sherman?
Here.
Counselor Wagner?
President?
And Counselor Walsh?
Here.
May we pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, for which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any town council reports and correspondence? Counselor Jordan?
I have two things. One is from the Recycling Committee. Their composting survey just went live, and it will be up on the town website soon, so please take a moment and check out that and complete it, so we can get as much input as we can. Also, the town council will be working on goal-setting in a couple of months, so per request from a citizen, I am requesting some input from the public at large to email us any ideas that you think we should be working on for goals in the coming year of 2015.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Walsh?
The senior citizen advisory commission is hot at work. Since they were officially put in place, they've met every two weeks. It's hard to believe the amount of time that this group has spent. Under the championship of Brett Seekins, they will be coming to the council next month in hopes of being able to get us up to speed in terms of the good work that they've been involved with. And in the next several weeks, they have some public input sessions scheduled to gain some, a better understanding of the issues that are confronting our seniors in our community. And, you know, I applaud that effort, and I wanted to just bring that to the attention of the town council. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I had a couple of things. I'm sorry.
Jessica, one other thing. We had the good fortune of attending a dinner, appreciation dinner, for the Portland Museum Store volunteers the other night at Higgins, at the Higgins Beach. And I will tell you, it was a full house, and there were actually four of the councilors present. So it was a pretty great showing of appreciation and thanks to a group of volunteers who make everything happen out there at Fort Williams. So, a lot of great feedback, a lot of great conversation, and a wonderful group of volunteers who come from all over, not just in Cape Elizabeth, to work at the Fort, you know, at the fort. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McCoslin?
Yes, just wanted to remind people that next month, the citizens of Cape Elizabeth will be voting on the renovation reconstruction project for the Thomas Memorial Library. Information is available for anyone who needs it. It's on the town website. It's on the library website. There's information in the library itself. I think we still have information available over at Community Services as well, and you can certainly email any one of us on the council, and we can get back to you with more information if you need it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a couple items. I was, thank you, Counselor Walsh. I was going to mention the volunteer appreciation dinner, and it's a great time to thank all the volunteers that work at the Portland Headlight Museum shop. This Saturday, another recycling committee event for paper shredding. This is extremely popular, and I think probably a lot of people have it on their calendar. You're allowed four boxes per vehicle, so don't miss it. I'd also like to mention that this, a week from this Wednesday, on October 15th, is the first of two candidates' nights held by the Cape Elizabeth High School Government Class under the guidance of their teacher Ted Jordan. On the 15th, it will be here from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., and that night, we'll have the legislative candidates. The following Wednesday, October 22nd, the government class will hold Candidates Night for the local municipal candidates. So that's, it's always a well-attended event and a wonderful evening that the government class puts on. So, moving right along, could we please have the Finance Committee report?
Thank you, Jessica. I thank you to the town council for attending the meeting with our auditors last week. We had five members of the school board join us as well, which was a good showing. I really appreciate their involvement as well. And you have 28 pages of the financial report in your packet. I'm sure all of you have spent time reading it, but the highlights are that our house is in order, and our excise tax revenues are up. The revenue at the museum at the Portland Headlight, it's down slightly by 5,000, and I think revenue sharing is really just a direct result of some timing issues more than anything else. But you have 28 pages for your, your reading pleasure. And again, in talking to the town manager, we, our house is in order, things are on track.
You know, Counselor Walsh, if I'm correct, in my memory, that our building permits are up 87 percent. I think that's on that initial page. That's a pretty, pretty impressive number. I think.
Yeah, that's the breakout.
Yeah. Anyway, thank you.
Budget. Building permit fees. Yeah, building permit fees. Yeah, $120,000, basically, up 87.8 percent.
Pretty impressive.
Pretty amazing. Year, last year was $90,000 for the same period, so some pent-up demand that is coming forward, I think. All good investments in our community and people's homes, and, thank you.
Yep. Sorry, Counselor Jordan, did I miss?
Oh, I just have one more reminder, that the fall cleanup at the transfer sent, transfer station starts this weekend, from October 11th to October 27th. You can bring disposal items, and the fee is waived for citizens, so.
Thank you. Okay. And the town, I'm sorry, we have an opportunity right now for citizens to address the council on items that are not on this evening's agenda. Is there anyone wishing to do so? Okay, that, thank you. There's no one that has come forward. And now, could we have the town managers' report?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to mention a couple of things. First, the council had authorized in the budget for us to, to upgrade some of what we're doing in the human resource area, and I just wanted to report that this morning was the first meeting that the department heads had with an HR consultant that we're working with, a gentleman by the name of Rick Dactory. And amongst other things that he will be doing, working with them, is reviewing all of our human resource systems and practices. He's going to be having individual meetings with every department heads to go over all of our record-keeping policies, practices, systems, et cetera, et cetera, training and development, job descriptions, performance appraisal forms, leave procedures, recruitment and hiring procedures, career development issues, and on. As part of our agreement with him, he also has an HR helpline that any department head can give him a call and get practical advice and counsel on any employee issues, long-term strategies for management, and just, just generally advice. He's also going to be working with us on developing new job descriptions for the Thomas Memorial Library, assuming the positions are evolving there. And will then be also doing a pay study for the library positions once that those job descriptions are completed, so. Anyway, that's underway, and he's going to be meeting individually with each department head in, between now and the end of the month. I did also want to mention, we've had a number of citizens who have passed away this past month since the last council meeting. Bob Hannigan was, I actually remember the planning board back in the 1960s during a time when it was, it was extremely busy, and some of you may know Janet Hannigan, Bob's wife Janet, works for us as the Spurwick Church greeter. Tom Summers, I don't think it's been in the newspaper yet, but also passed away. He was our planning board chairman back in the 1980s for, for a number of years, was very involved in reviewing a lot of subdivisions that probably people in the audience watching and otherwise now live in, but just a fine person. His, his wife Lydia was also very active on our Board of Historic Preservation Advisors, so just, you know, a really, a nice couple, and Tom and Bob will be missed. Finally, John Swinehart was one of our dispatchers for, I don't know the exact number of years, 20 or so, but he was, he was one of the dispatchers when we closed dispatching, and one of the ones that it was tough to, in essence, lay him off. But anyway, he, he remained friendly throughout, even, even after we, we did that, and he was 58 years old, same age as me, so, you know, one of those things that, you know, really, you know, you think about, so. But just, you know, good work, he was an excellent dispatcher, and he'll be missed by his family and a lot of friends, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item is review of the draft minutes of the September 8, 2014 Town Council meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of September 8, 2014? Counselor Sherman?
A move to approve.
Is there a second? Counselor Ray? Is there any discussion, or are there any corrections? All those in favor? They're approved unanimously. Okay. The next item is public hearing on the draft Town Center Plan. So those wishing to come forward to, to express their views, we have a 15-minute max. Each individual has three minutes to speak, so we will now open the public hearing on the proposed draft Town Center Plan.
Hi, my name is Paul Seidman. I live at 21 Oakview Drive here in Cape Elizabeth. I just had a question about the draft. Given that it is clear at this point that our village green would be more reasonably and safely located at the new library site, why does there need to be wording in the TCPC report that calls for openness to modifying ordinances in case it ends up by 77?
Thank you. And before the next person I misspoke, there is no time limit on a public hearing. Anyone else?
Overall time limit?
Oh, yeah.
Time limit.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Milroy, and I live at Five Spoon Drift Lane here in Cape. Members of the council, I'm here to speak on behalf of the proposed draft plan, support that, and also, maybe I'm jumping ahead, but support the Tax Increment Financing District to finance the proposals. As I understand the plan, it focuses on Route 77 as a main street with sidewalks and a developer possibly creating a, a small park area. My question is, is this really to be considered the town center? I wonder if, in the preparation of the draft, has it really been considered to extend the sidewalks across the street from the town hall to link the critical town facilities that we have, the pool, the community center, libraries, and the stores all together? This would create a pedestrian ways so that children, seniors, and others can move in a pedestrian, say, free area or environment amongst these facilities in that area. And in creating these linkages between these existing facilities and businesses, it has the opportunity to create a campus-like environment and a campus-like quad, a quad that could take the form of a traditional rural New England village green. And that's a, a question, I guess, before the, the House, if that was being considered as a part of that planning effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Clark, 6 Brentwood Road here in Cape Elizabeth. Last time I was here, I had a little e-cigarette as part of a demonstration. I don't have that this time. And I got to start with a joke, or I can't speak in public, so. I've read thoroughly everything that the Town Center Committee worked very hard to put together. I really have. I'm sort of obsessed over it. When I read something, I tend to do that. There are people on the, on the council who know that on the smoking issue, I was quite adamant in that one, so that's the way I am. The one question I have for the town council is, do you really think you've got enough public input to this plan, given the magnitude of the plan? If we were talking about something that is an upgrade to the, the rules around how a facade of a building is planned, that's one thing, but when you're talking about up to $2.7 million for just sidewalks within the town center, you're talking big bucks here compared to the $4 million library you've got coming up. That's over half the cost of that library. So I think it's important that if the town council chooses to move forward with this plan, you've got good public input. I read everything in that plan, or everything in the minutes from the meeting from that, and the one thing that stands out from their, or their October 2013 meeting was, there were only 82 respondents that represent the entirety of the input to that committee. Now, there could have been emails, et cetera, et cetera, that, that aren't public, and so there could be more public input, but 82 percent, or 82 respondents out of the 3,900 residences roughly there on Cape Elizabeth is 2 percent. And I don't think that's enough, myself. No matter how well-stated the respondents were, no matter whether they really took seriously the, the ideas and concepts that were presented to them, you don't have enough people, in my opinion. And the thing that, but that bothers me more than anything is, if the town agrees that we want a town center, and we want to invest millions of bucks in that, that's great. I don't have a problem with that, but I do have a problem with the town spending money in anticipation of a bond being approved, when they only to find out, like we did two years ago with the original library plan, that the town wasn't behind the plan. Wouldn't you spend half a million bucks to get to the point of even putting that on the ballot? With the new library, I hear it's up to 300,000 that we've put into that before it's been approved by the town. And to me, that's a waste. We don't have that kind of money to throw around. And so what that says to me is, you gotta have good public input. And in my opinion, right now, you don't have it. The other thing is demographics.
If you could finish up, your time is up, Mr. Scott, or Mr. Clark, I'm sorry.
The, okay, one last thing. The last point is that in that survey that was taken by the Town Committee, Town Center Committee, was a question, do you want the town to look into its, its zoning rules and regulations to make building a business in the town center easier for, for a business to do? 60 percent of the people said no. What that says is something we all know. Nobody wants businesses in a town center, and that's been documented over and over and over again.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark.
Hi, I'm Mary Townsend. I live at 5 Pearl Street, and I just wanted to, as a former member of the committee, reiterate a little of what I said a few months ago. Caitlin, I was excited to hear that goal-setting is becoming a priority in terms of getting some public input, and I would like to suggest that what you do is you look at doing a, an open forum, such as the library forum, where you have the public come in, and, and you talk about what the public sees as the goals. So we don't wind up with a goal that maybe, as this gentleman suggests, isn't reflective of public priorities. So I'd like to make that suggestion. I think another thing that you can look at is appointing balanced committees. Really look at your appointments committee. Look at making sure you have all viewpoints represented as much as you can. I would also say, and I brought this up last time, and I would really like to see a change in reporting of meetings, because you can't tell what happens at meetings if committee members are responsible for taking minutes. I'm not sure why we don't record meetings so we can see on, online, how these committees come up with the recommendations that they come up with, what the process is. It might be helpful for the public. So I would suggest that, those three things, and, you know, it's, you know, we live in a very small town. It's very easy to pick up the phone and figure out what people's responses are, so I would suggest, you know, sort of, I guess what I'm talking about now is your code of ethics, and I was glad to see that you were looking at, at some of that. And I'd like to see you expand that to some guidelines that, and recommendations around how you handle emails in particular. I think that was a problem with this committee, was that emails were handled in a way that some people considered getting information, you know, that responding to group emails using a person's private email was used as a forum where, you know, I think we need to have some guidelines around that, just so people understand what they're dealing with when they email the council and, and what happens. So I'd like to see what your response is to that, and thank you for your service, and thank you for the opportunity to talk with you.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Lennon. I live at 54 Cranbrook Drive. I want to thank all of you for your service to our community and town. It seems like there's a theme developing, and that is this craving people have for more citizen input, or maybe more work that's reflected of what the majority of people in Cape desire, and I'm just going to pick up on that. I agree with this gentleman that we didn't really find out if people want a town center and businesses and a town green, and a lot of the conversation around the committee was, well, this was picked up from the draft in 94. Well, that's 20 years old now, so I think there are a lot of ways in this day and age with technology to do quick surveys that can give you a lot of information, online monkey surveys, so forth. People do it all the time. So I guess I'm reiterating what everyone else has said. I also agree with Mary Townsend that the Appointments Committee is an extremely important committee in the council, and sometimes I think, I know when I was on it, I just waited for people to flow through the door. We interviewed them, we were thrilled they showed up, and we tried to appoint them. But as I think about it now, I think part of the job of the Appointments Committee is to actually solicit people to come in. You go out and you talk to friends, you maybe try to find people that might be contrarian to the view that you have, to try to get the broadest, most democratic viewpoint on whatever work you're, you're doing. I know Frank Governelli did that with the Open Space Committee, and I really admired his gumption to, to take that on, and he got a really great committee for it. And my final point is, I think if we're going to call these things citizen committees, they really should be citizen committees. I personally don't think there should be town councilors on it, and I don't think there should be paid staff as the head of it, or as a liaison, because that puts such a heavy thumb on the scale that I think a lot of times the citizens feel that they're just there filling a seat, and that whatever agenda was sort of preconceived comes into the room. So I would suggest that you form citizen committees, and you trust these people, who are generally intelligent and competent, to actually run their committee. They appoint their secretary, they appoint their chair, they appoint a small committee to draft the report, and there, there's no elected official, there's no staff person there. And I think what you might find is some really creative, fresh ideas, and something in the end that is more reflective of the citizens, because hopefully they're one and they're talking to people, and therefore might be more widely embraced when the final report comes out. Obviously, you guys could tweak it whatever you want, but it would be a fresh, a truly fresh look at whatever the issue is. I know when I served on the Alternative Energy Committee, which was purely citizens, they did such an amazing job, they got an award from Echelon, and they really knocked it out of the park, and I think it was because they were really left alone to, to a large degree, and they were passionate about the topic. So I would just leave you with that, to consider that a citizen committee should be a citizen committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public hearing is closed. Item, excuse me, number 124, the Town Center Plan. Draft motion that the Cape Elizabeth Town Council hereby adopts the September 4, 2014 draft of the Cape Elizabeth Town Center Plan as a planning guide for land use in the town center zone. Is there a motion, or Counselor Sherman, would you like to address this?
No, I was looking at Counsel Wagner to see if he, both of us were on the committee, if he wanted to make a motion.
Sure. Okay. I move that Cape Elizabeth Town Council adopt the September 4, 2014 draft of the Cape Elizabeth Town Center Plan as a planning guide for the land use in the town center zone.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Discussion. Counselor Jordan?
I just have a question. Going through it, maybe somebody who was on the committee could recap what the public participation was, since that was brought up several times. I know there was a survey, and I read through all the responses, but maybe if there's more, we could elaborate it for the public's interest.
Sure, Counsel Wagner?
We can both speak to it, but I heard, I think, I believe it's Mr. Clark, but I sat through almost all, I think I missed one meeting, but I think I have a different interpretation of what the, the feedback that we received from the public was, and I certainly didn't receive the feedback that the town as a whole does not want businesses in the town center, quite to the contrary. I, I don't believe that was the input that we received. But we don't need to get into the, the individual points so much, but I think that we had pretty good public input on this. We had a, what do we call it, forum? What was about 80 people, I think, came to that, and we had online surveys that people could log on to the website and their input. We received a tremendous amount of email traffic, a lot of the public showed up, albeit usually the same members the public showed up at the, the individual meetings, and all well-publicized. What you, what you find is, there's often a small amount of the public that's interested in giving input into what the town's doing. But I think we received reasonable input. I, I happened to be an advocate at the time when we formed the committee, that we spend some money on it, and that we actually do a statistical survey. I was in the minority on that viewpoint, and that, that didn't get, that didn't happen. But I'm satisfied that we received good public input. I would have liked to add more, but we got what we got, and I think that the Town Center Plan is reflective of the sentiments that we received.
I mean, I think Jamie did a good job describing it. At every meeting, there was, per our Town Council policy, there was an opportunity at the beginning for people to speak, as well as at the end. So although there were a number of folks who, who, a lot of our meetings, we did hear from a number of citizens at our, our meetings, as well as the public forum.
And you did have, including your public forum, you did have, I think, 17 meetings? Or you had quite a few meetings? So there, there were, and that, which were all public? Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, and we did also meet separately with the Library Planning Committee, too.
And, Counsel Walsh?
The original question that was brought up about our, in the, in the document, our openness to consider or modify ordinances, is that something that we can get a little clarity around, whether in fact that is an issue, or something that needs to be looked at in terms of the language that's in our recommended town plan? I'm just curious. It was the very first speaker, and...
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, Counsel Walsh?
The very first speaker brought up the issue, or question to Town Council about the village green issue, and some of the language that's contained in this Town Center Plan, that we have an openness to modifying ordinances to either assist, help, support, whatever. I'm just wondering if somebody could address that.
Counselor Sherman?
If I recall the comment, it, it was linked to the potential for a Town Center Green by the library, and if, okay, I'm not remembering the comment. I do recall that sentiment being expressed, and I, I believe it was the Town Center Planning Committee's goal that a, a town green be placed somewhere along Route 77, as opposed to in front of the library. That green space has been there for decades, and not a single planning group, Town Council said, or ever focused on that as a town green. So with all due respect to the proponents of that, I've often viewed that as a bit of a red herring. I didn't think that that was really what people had in mind when they talked about a town green, which was part, in parcel, trying to make the town center more attractive, to get traffic to slow down as cars travel through the town center on Route 77, so, anyway... So anyway, but I'm not sure what, I'm just curious what is coming.
Counsel, I'm sorry, the public hearing is closed, Mr. Clark. Thank you. Counsel Wagoner?
Well, in the original draft of the Town Center Plan, we had in language proposing a potential ordinance change with regards to the Town Center Green on this side of 77. So, and I know Mr. Sidman had some concerns about that, as did other members of the community, and my understanding is that's been removed because it's not necessarily, well, anyway, it's been removed. And the Town Center Plan's been modified so that there's no suggestion for ordinance change at this point.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Walsh.
Additionally, Caitlin and Jamie had submitted a report to us a couple of months back, sort of a post-mortem, if you will, on the Conservation Commission's work on, and some, a deep dive about process and potential areas where we could improve process. While Mary Townsend's comments to us today may or may not have related to the subject at hand here, there was a lot of suggestion about process in what was done in the past and what we ought to be doing in the future. And I think if you remember, we decided that we should take your input from that report, coupled with what we're learning from other committees that we've charged over the last several months or years, and trying to sort of amalgamate that into some changes. So I appreciate the input that's been given here, and I just want to make sure that the citizens understand that we're listening, and we certainly understand that, you know, process is an important thing. People need to feel committed, not disenfranchised by the process at any level. So I just think it's important that we just kind of log for the record, we're hearing it, and clearly you folks did some great work on the last deep dive that we did, and clearly in this case, we're hearing more information that needs to be included in whatever we design for the future. So again, I appreciate Mary's comments.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I just wanted to clarify two points. It was mentioned 2.7 million cost of sidewalks, and that's actually for both sidewalks and drainage projects. And the cost is really driven by drainage. And, you know, unlike the library, which if approved would be spent all at once, this is actually, would be spent over any number of years. It's not determined in the plan how many number of years, but certainly not upfront at one time. The next item on the agenda, in fact, is looking at a long-term funding mechanism to help partially pay for that. So I just want to, I just want to clarify that the 2.7 million isn't for sidewalks. The other, there was a suggestion for more linkages in the town center, and, you know, as the motion that Counselor Wagner made, this is a planning guide, and, you know, the concept is to have linkages to improve pedestrian improvement. Some of the specifics are going to come on this over time, but it's good to have these different suggestions and to have an opportunity to provide clarity as a result of some of the comments.
Thank you. And I think it's also important to remind everyone that this is a guide for land use. A guide. Anyone else? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay. Next item is a public hearing on the Town Center Tax Increment Financing District. I would like to open the public hearing. Again, there's no overall time limit, but each individual speaker will have three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the Town Center Tax Increment Financing District Seeing no one, I'll close that public hearing. Item number 125, the Town Center Tax Increment Financing District Application. I'm going to ask just Town Manager to just briefly mention this. He did give the council a workshop on the item.
Yeah, the Tax Increment Financing District, first of all, is a certain location. In this case, it's the Town Center Zone, which is in pink. And any increase in taxes that happens in this area within a certain period of time, if it's in a tax increment finance district, is sheltered from the state tax valuation. As a result of being sheltered from the state tax valuation, the county tax would not, does not increase as much as it otherwise would, and the school subsidy does not decrease to the extent that it would. So really, it's, you know, a tax increment finance district is looked at as smart tax policy, and the, instead of, what the sheltering that occurs is the additional revenue that comes from development in this area is set aside specifically for improvements in the area, such as the aforementioned sidewalks and drainage improvements.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the application to the state of Maine for a tax increment financing district in the town center zone? Counsel McCoslin?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Walsh, any discussion? Concerns or questions for the Town Manager? Counsel Sherman?
I was negligent in the last discussion of our last motion. I didn't have an opportunity to thank the members of the Town Center Plan Committee, which Jamie and I have said many times how hard this committee worked, how much we appreciate the efforts. I didn't realize it was 17 meetings, but they were not always easy meetings to attend, and this committee really persevered. So I want to thank, we have our chair here, Stephanie Carver. Peter Curry is also here in the audience tonight. So thank you both, and also the rest of the Town Center Planning Committee, as well as our staff person, who in my opinion did make the process a much better, more effective one, notwithstanding some of the comments earlier tonight.
Thank you.
I agree with Counsel Sherman.
Any other comments? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Item number 126, Report from the Ordinance Committee Regarding Roosters. I would like to ask the ordinance chairwoman, Kathy Ray, to give us a little update on that.
Thank you. The ordinance committee met on September 19 to discuss the issue of roosters, as it was brought up to us from some citizens. And I'll try to be brief, but I will also mention that the town planner and police chief are here for any questions that you might call on. They were both very helpful, specifically to being able to talk with the police chief about enforcement, because enforcement became a big issue in terms of how do we enforce an ordinance? And as the ordinance committee, I think we wrestled with a lot of different pieces of this. And I say that because I think we went sort of all over the place and sort of came back to the proposal, which is to restrict roosters on lot sizes of 40, under 40,000 feet, square feet. And I can't, is Maureen, I can't see.
Yes.
She's, oh, sorry, I was looking here. Maureen's here, if you wish to see the map, she can put it on the back wall. But what I will say is that we first went over the summary of the process that we went through in 2011, and that process had a proposed ordinance, which included a lot of different animals. At the time, it was done to deal with a rooster issue, and I guess the rooster went away, and so we dropped the ordinance process. We also, just looking over my notes, we also looked at, we talked with the police chief and Ms. O'Meara about how we could put something together that was enforceable. Again, we talked about decibels, we talked about setbacks from property lines, we talked about special collars. When we talked about distance of the coop from the property line, we got into issues that would end up going to the planning board in terms of fencing, types of fencing, so forth. When we talked about noise, because we've been approached by, about the noise piece several times, in order to regulate noise, it's a much more complex item than you might think. And I think that's where the police chief was helpful in saying, well, how do we enforce this? Somebody complains about noise, I send my officers there, do they stay there? Do they wait till the noise happens? Do they try to measure the amount of noise? We talked about age of roosters. When do they start crowing? We had a resident expert that knew a little bit about roosters, and he gave us some feedback on that. Because I had gone down the path of saying, well, what about roosters? How old are they going to be? When do they start to crow? Well, they apparently can do that at different points in their life. How do we tell the difference when we talk about chicks and how sometimes it can be hard to decide what sex the chicks are? So I just, I tell you all this because I think it's important that you know that we really had a fairly lengthy conversation. In fact, Counselor Wagner had done some research on his computer, I don't remember the name of the, oh, mypetchickens.com, I think it's, anyway. So we ended up that Counselor Walsh made a motion to recommend to change the Chapter 12 miscellaneous ordinances to ban roosters on lots of less than 40,000 square feet. Counselor Wagner seconded the motion. We thanked a bunch of people for their input, because we did have people from the public that came and spoke. We also had Victoria Valent there, who had had it before, back in 2011, when it was at the planning board piece and had to come to the town council. So she had filled us in on some of the prior work, as well as Maureen's. So I will say that the map, if you'd like to see it, does include a number of lots. But what's important to also remember is that this only covers 11% of the actual land in Cape Elizabeth. So although it covers a number of lots, it would affect a number of lots, it only affects 11% of the actual land in the town. So I'm not sure if I've given you everything that you wanted, but as I said, the police chief and the town planner are here and can, are here specifically to help us with this issue, should there be any more, you know, questions that come up.
Okay. I mean, what we're, what the motion is, is to set a public hearing for next month. Would any councils like to see the map of the lots that, that shows the number of lots and the location of lots that are under 40,000 square feet? Does anyone like to see it, or are you comfortable with that knowledge already? Nope? Okay. Any, is there a motion then, to set a public hearing for Thursday, November 6, 2014? After you make the motion. Counsel Ray?
So moved.
Is there a second? Counsel Walsh? Any further discussion? Counsel Wagner?
Just, you know, I haven't heard a tremendous amount of public response to this, opposing this concept, heard a little. But I would encourage anybody that wants to continue to keep roosters or ever have roosters, if there's anything that you want to present to the council prior to the public hearing, I would encourage those citizens to do so. For example, the concept of rooster collars. If there was some submission of proof or evidence that these things are effective, let us hear about it before the public hearing, certainly at the public hearing, but I would encourage people to submit that before the public hearing, so we have a chance to consider it.
Anyone else? Counsel Walsh?
I just, this is really for Kathy and for Jamie, because we discussed the public notification, if you will, about this hearing. We, obviously, when we had the astrological high tide plus three, we expanded the communication for that. We have a little bit of feedback from some people saying it was a little bit too late, if you will, in the process. So I don't know whether we need to amend this to include expanding, because every, well, how many lots? We're talking 2,300? Is that correct?
2,800. I think it was 2,800 lots.
2,800 lots. So, you know, I think we've got to, we've got to be more robust about communicating to those folks who are going to have a change in the use of their 40,000 square foot lot. I just want to make sure that that's covered and that we don't just assume it's happening, because when we get here a month from now, I want to make sure people have heard about this, not just from the news media, but also something from us.
Counsel Ray?
We did talk about that, I'm glad you brought that up. We did talk about that at the ordinance committee meeting, because as Counsel Walsh also said, you know, we try to make sure that people who are affected are being notified. But we talked about the number of individuals, number of lot owners that would be, need to be notified. We came up with a fairly large number to mail them a notification, and I look at Maureen because I don't remember ballpark what that number was, but...
It was well over $1,000, I recall, in the minutes.
Yes. So I just wanted to bring that up, because initially we said, no, let's do that, we did that with the high watermark, but then we started looking at the numbers and said, maybe that's not the most effective way to potentially communicate with lot owners. So I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Sherman?
I mean, it would seem to me if the proposed ordinance change goes to the heart of somebody's ability to enjoy his or her property, like changing the high watermark definition, suddenly the lot's no longer buildable or potentially, that's one thing. But in the last five to 10 years, we've had, I guess, two cases of a rooster in densely, dense neighborhood. And so I just don't view this as an issue that rises to the level where we'd need to send notification to every single lot affected. It's been publicized in the Cape Courier and the newspapers. I mean, it's easy to make fun of it, roosters, ha ha, and I'm not unsympathetic to the Canadies, I'm not unsympathetic to the neighbors, but I don't think we need to spend that kind of money on a notification, because then it seems to me any ordinance change would require that, and I don't think that's a precedent that we'd want to set.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Counsel Jordan?
I just had a question about how it works with grandfathering of ordinances. We put a lot of ordinances into effect, and people are grandfathered because they had a pre-existing thing, and then we've gone ahead and changed it. So what is the legal concept behind that? And is there any way it could be argued and applied here, where you purchased something, did something with your property, and now we're changing it and basically making you change something that you've already been doing on your lot? My other question was the noise versus rooster. To me, this is a noise issue. Jamie was saying that, you know, he's heard a few people comment about their dislike of this ordinance. I've heard a lot from several people, and I've encouraged them, and I encourage everybody to continue to give as much feedback to the council, because as we heard earlier, public input, we can't do anything without it. I mean, it's just our best guess up here if we don't hear from the public. But I'd like to hear from Chief Williams as to how this and a barking dog ordinance relates, because we have a barking dog ordinance, and basically, is that meaningless, or should we next be looking at banning dogs in the town of Cape Elizabeth, because it's unenforceable?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't want you to come for nothing.
No, no, and I appreciate that, too. Appreciate that. No, quite frankly, dogs and roosters are two separate items. When we talk about dogs, dogs don't bark all the time, not all dogs bark. My understanding is roosters make the cockadoodle do in the morning, and from what I've read, could be through the day several times, and there is nothing to really to stop them that I'm aware of. Whereas dogs, when you go down and speak to the owner, could you take them inside? For example, I'll use myself. I have two small dogs. If there's another dog that's walking in the area, they'll bark, but I'll go get them and I'll take them in, so they don't habitually bark for a long period of time. If there's no dogs out there, my dogs won't bark. My understanding with a rooster is, it doesn't matter if there's anything outside, it's going to cockadoodle do. Therefore, it's much cleaner for us that are going to enforce it, to make it you can't have any roosters on a piece of property under 40,000 square feet.
So my question is, right now, we have a barking dog ordinance. So if you get called because there's a dog barking, you go to the residents and the people are given an opportunity to make their dog stop? If they can't make their dog stop barking, what happens?
What we would do is we'd first of all go to the complaint and/or go down into the area, see if we hear the dog barking. Then we go to the complaint and say... Then we'd go to the complaint and say, what's the story? They would either point the house out where the noise was coming from. And we would have them sign a statement, write out a statement as to what happened. Then we'd go to the dog owner's residence and ask them, what's the story with the dog? Either, no, it wasn't my dog barking, but we have a complaint that it was your dog, and try to mediate the situation. And quite frankly, we do the same thing in the rooster. We try to mediate the situation. That's why it's taken so long. I mean, I've been here 35 years, and this is probably the second rooster, or third rooster that I've had to handle, or been, you know, associated with. And so it's, it's really not that big of a deal, because in the past two incidences, we've mediated the situation and it's gone away.
So I guess that's my point, is right now, we're saying you've had two instances in the past how many years? And we're going to take steps that make it so that, who knows how many roosters are in this town, but we're effectively saying, you can't have roosters anymore, even though you've had it for years, your neighbors aren't complaining, everybody's fine. But if you keep that rooster, you're going to be breaking the laws of Cape Elizabeth. My thought was, if you make it a crowing rooster, like a barking dog, then the Kennedy's neighbor, sorry, I can't pronounce your name, would have an avenue to call you. And then if the rooster won't stop and it becomes an issue, he has a mechanism to make the rooster go away. But all the other households in, in the town would be able to keep their rooster.
First of all, if I understood...
Yeah, I don't think she asked the question. I think she made a statement.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Could I respond to it? Thank you. Anything else?
Any other questions? Thank you, Chief Williams.
I'll send it.
Okay. Counsel McCoslin?
So I have a question. Did the ordinance committee talk about the effect of rooster noise on other lots that are larger than 40,000 square feet? So if someone has a lot that's 80,000 square feet, and they have a rooster, and their rooster causes problems for the people next door, are we planning to come back and revisit the issue as a noise issue at that point? And I think that's what Caitlin is getting at, that we have still the potential for the same kind of problem that we have with barking dogs, just on a bigger lot size. And I'd love to hear a response from Counsel Wagner.
Yeah, we did discuss bigger lot sizes, and we thought that that's, wasn't really the issue in front of the ordinance committee, was talking about small lot sizes. That's where the problems cropped up. And bigger lot sizes, we haven't heard complaints about. But I remember raising it, saying, like, well, what about a rooster right next to the property line on an 80,000-foot lot? It could be close to the next person's house. So yeah, it's feasible. But that's not what we're hearing, is the source of the complaint.
Counsel Ray.
And it also doesn't stop us from revisiting it, should that become an issue. Because we did talk about it, but decided that, as Jamie said, it wasn't what, it wasn't what was brought to us for the issue. And just like with any, just like with any of the ordinances, should we find that it's not working, or it's created a new issue, or whatever, then we can come back and revisit it and say, okay, we need to expand, or contract, or change, or whatever.
I guess, to your point earlier on that, in our session, not today, but past, we tried to legislate as little as possible on this point.
Okay. Anyone else? All those in favor of setting a public hearing for Thursday, November 6, 2014, at 7:00 p.m.? It's unanimous. Item number 127, Fort Williams Park use request. Again, I'd like to ask the town manager to introduce this item, as he's the staff liaison on the 250th Anniversary Committee.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I was wondering where you were going to go with that. Anyway, Barbara Powell is speaking at, I think, a historic preservation this evening, and was hoping that we wouldn't get to this until she got here, but we're at it. So anyway, Bob Ayotte is here, who's the chairman of the, chairman or president? What are you?
President.
President of the Fort Williams Charitable Foundation. This would be a joint activity of both the Fort Williams Charitable Foundation, that's a misnomer, and I wrote in the agenda, not the Cape Elizabeth Charitable Foundation, and the Anniversary Committee. And what they're looking at is a Portland Symphony Orchestra concert on July 25, 2015, to commemorate the 250th anniversary of Cape Elizabeth incorporation. This is one week before the Beach to Beacon Road Race. And they would have sponsorships that would pay for much of the cost of the symphony. And they'd like to get started with planning for this. It's been reviewed by the Fort Williams Advisory Commission. I believe had unanimous support. And because this is a municipal activity, we would not be charging fees under this proposal for the use of the park. But the 250th Anniversary Committee is excited about it. And the Fort Williams Charitable Foundation's also had quite a bit of citizen involvement in helping to plan it, not just members of their board, but other citizens as well, who were excited about the prospect of bringing the symphony back to Fort Williams. The particular area where the concert would be, this time, the proposal is on the field right next to Portland Headlight, which is different from anyone who remembers the old days, when they were up by the parade ground. So it could be an exciting event, and there's a proposed rain date, in case it's a little too exciting, on July 25.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the request to utilize Fort Williams Park for concert by the Portland Symphony Orchestra on July 25, 2015, with a rain date of July 26, 2015? Counsel Walsh.
I'm happy to move item 127 as written.
And is there a second? Counsel McCoslin. Any further discussion or questions for the manager? Counsel Jordan?
I'm just happy there's a rain date set.
Anyone else? Counsel Ray.
Does the week before the Beach to Beacon give the town sufficient time to deal with this and the Beach to Beacon?
Yeah, that was reviewed a couple weeks ago. They had a conference call with town staff, with representatives of the charitable foundation, and with representatives of the Anniversary Committee. And there was, there had been talk about having it that night at the Beach to Beacon, and quite frankly, staff was not enamored of that idea. But it's believed by having it a week before, it sort of kicks off, you know, you know, this is Beach to Beacon Week coming up, but it also keeps and maintains the focus that it's really about the 250th anniversary.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Item number 128, the Cottage Brook subdivision acceptance of open space conservation easement and public roads. I will again ask the town manager to give us a brief description of this item.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Solomon. When the town council, actually, when the planning board reviews proposed subdivisions, during the time of the subdivision review, it comes to the town council for conditional approval. And what the town council does, when it does conditional approval, is they look at the open space that's proposed to be offered, say, yes, we'll accept that when it's offered. They also look at the proposed public roads and other public improvements, and they say, yes, we'll accept it once it's built. So that was in 2006. It shows how long some of these things take. At that point, I think it might have still been called the Spurwick Woods subdivision. Now it's the Cottage Brook subdivision. This is off Spurwick Avenue, right near the Salt Portland Line. I think David, I actually put in your packet copies of minutes. It might have brought back some painful memories. But regardless, the subdivision eventually got approved. The council agreed to accept these things, has moved along, and here we are, all these eight years later, with a lot of trees gone, and with a recession passing by, and with people already living in some nice homes in this subdivision. The roads have been accepted, they've been inspected by the town engineer, as the phases that are indicated here. All of the deeds and all the materials have been reviewed by the town engineer. And the developers' representatives have actually signed all the necessary paperwork. And the only thing that's left for us to possibly go out and plow these roads this winter is for the town council to take action this evening, accepting as proposed item number 128. And I'd suggest that you not read it in its entirety.
Any, any...
Allowed, I mean, you can read it, but not allow it.
Any discussion or questions, Counsel Walsh?
No, no. You need a motion.
Did we have...
There could be a motion.
Oh, I apologize. Is there a motion to approve the Cottage Brook subdivision acceptance of open space conservation easement and public roads?
Our departing counselor at this meeting wants to make that motion.
Well, just given my long history with this project, I actually bumped into the developer's attorney the other day, and we took a little trip down memory lane. Spurwick Woods, now known as Cottage Brook.
Cottage Brook.
Yeah. Anyway, so I moved that we, oh God, I gotta find the motion. Excuse me. That we accept from Spurwick Woods LLC a certain tract of parcel of land situated in the town of Cape Elizabeth, as well as the roads outlined in our materials.
Thank you. Is there a second? Counsel Walsh. Any further discussion or questions? Counsel Wagner.
Maybe if Michael could just sum it up in a couple sentences as to what the kind of public benefit of this conservation easement will be.
You know, it will be like many of our other easements. There'll be trails along there for the public to enjoy. It will connect into other trails. But, you know, the major piece is, I forget the exact, it's what, nine-something acres of land that will never be developed, that will be available not only for quiet enjoyment, but also to look at as well. So it's, you know, good open space preservation in that neighborhood of the community. And I think particularly when people see all the trees that came out when the neighborhood was developed, they're even more appreciative that at least there'll be nine acres that they won't see that happen again.
Anyone else? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay. Let's move on to item, item number 129, signs on traffic islands. It's proposed to refer to the ordinance committee, a review of policies regarding signs on traffic islands. We all had the opinion from the town attorney in our packet. I don't know if the town manager would like to say a few words about this.
Only if you'd like me to.
I think it was pretty straightforward, personally. Is there a motion to refer to the ordinance committee, this review of policies regarding signs on traffic islands? Counsel Wagner.
So moved.
Is there a second? Counsel Sherman. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay. And item number 130, code of ethics. It's proposed to adopt a proposed code of ethics for members of the town council. I'd like to ask Counsel Sherman to just give a little brief presentation of this, since he's worked very hard on it.
Sure. It was a few months ago where the council had as a workshop agenda item, the idea that perhaps we should adopt a code of ethics for the town council. There were follow-up workshops where we reviewed drafts. I, as a member of the council, took a laboring order in drafting a proposed, a proposal for the council to consider and adopt. That version went through a couple of iterations. We borrowed, I will confess, provisions that were from other towns that we thought were quite good. We also made changes to those and added our own original sections. And I believe, over the span of two council workshops, I received feedback from the rest of the council, which brings us to tonight, which is, I hope, the final version of the code of ethics for the council to consider. One thing that I did want to make clear is that the code is intended to apply to members of the council. We had discussions about whether it should apply to members of other boards and commissions, and we felt like we ought to just start with the council itself and adopt a code for us. And then if we felt that it was appropriate, we might ask other boards or commissions to take a look and see whether they ought to do something similar. So this is really, this is intended and provides that it applies to the council only.
Thank you, Counsel Sherman. Is there a motion to approve the, I'm sorry, to adopt the proposed code of ethics for members of the town council?
Yes.
So moved.
Counsel Sherman? Is there a second? Counsel Walsh? Any further discussion? Counsel Wagner?
Just wanted to thank David for doing the work that he did on this. I actually did review the clean draft, and I have no further comments.
Counsel McCoslin?
Yes, I wanted to say the same. I think we called this your swan song. Nicely done. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel Walsh.
Compliments as well, but I also want to compliment my colleagues, because I think this is a major step, and one that I'm very pleased to be part of, in terms of setting the ethical bar for our committee, for the town, to all understand exactly what, what the standards are we were following and doing our business by. So again, I thank each and every one of you for your input.
Great. Counsel Ray?
Just wanted to thank Counselor Sherman for all his work, because it looked like it was a lot of work. And then when we got together, we're all sort of throwing out, well, how about, what about this sentence, and changing that? And he's rapidly taking notes, and I mean, he knows he's ever going to incorporate all of that. But he did, and he did a wonderful job, so thank you.
Well, thank you.
Anyone else? I'd like to echo all the sentiments. I, I think that this is something that we all can be extremely proud of. It does raise the bar for our ethical conduct here in Cape Elizabeth, and I think it's an outstanding document. So, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay. Now we have an opportunity for citizens to discuss items that are not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone wishing to do so? Seeing no one, that opportunity is closed. At this point, we have item number 131, an executive session request to enter, I'm sorry, it is requested to enter into executive session to discuss the status of collective bargaining with local 340 of the Teamsters, representing Public Works employees. Is there a motion to enter into executive session? Counsel McCoslin?
David really wants to do this.
That's okay. I made enough motions.
So Counsel McCoslin?
So moved.
Moved? Is there a second? Counsel Walsh. All right. Any discussion?
Just the motion to reflect the statutory sections.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. I'm sorry. Would you read that in its entirety, please?
Yes, it is, I have, it is requested to enter into, or I request that we enter into executive session to discuss the status of collective bargaining with local 340 of the Teamsters, representing Public Works employees, according to number one. You'll have to remind me what MRSA stands for.
Just say MRSA.
MRSA. Annotated.
Annotated. Thank you. Subsection 40568.
Seconded.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. And what time is it? It's 8:00. Okay.
We may be coming back into public session, but not on television.